Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome everyone to the September 9th, 2024 Tuolton City Council Meeting. Tonight we'll start off with our customary Pledge of Allegiance and that's going to be led by Councilor Brooks tonight. That brings us to announcements and our first announcement is Dystonia Month Proclamation, which will be read by Councilor Brooks and we have a special guest tonight who will have a comment about it, Erin Stinson. So Bridgette.
And I'm reading this first, right?
Yep.
Okay, here's our proclamation declaring September 2024 as Dystonia Awareness Month in the city of Tuolton. Whereas dystonia is a neurological movement disorder characterized by involuntary muscle contractions causing repetitive movements and abnormal postures. And whereas dystonia affects individuals of all ages and significantly impacts their quality of life and ability to perform everyday activities. And whereas there is currently no cure for dystonia and more research is needed to find better treatments and ultimately a cure. And whereas raising awareness about dystonia is crucial for early diagnosis, proper treatment, and improving the lives of those affected by this disorder. And whereas dystonia Awareness Month provides an opportunity to educate the public, support individuals and families living with dystonia, and promote research efforts to find better treatments and a cure. And whereas organizations, healthcare professionals, and community members can work together to advocate for increased research funding and to support those living with dystonia. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that Tuolton recognizes September 2024 as Dystonia Awareness Month. We encourage residents to join in raising awareness about dystonia, supporting those affected by this disorder, and promoting activities supporting research. Introduced and adopted this ninth day of September 2024.
Well, welcome Erin.
So Betsy Rodriguez grew up here and Erin has prepared some comments that she would like to share with you using her device.
Living with dystonia has proven to be quite challenging. I have had to make a lot of adaptations with daily living tasks. Dystonia is only a small piece of me and is not all of me. I am much more than the girl who has dystonia. Last year, I stumbled upon online art classes, which I love so much. Being in these classes has helped me with my confidence and the support and friendship from the online art community has been wonderful. Making art makes me so happy and it has helped me express myself. If I'm feeling down or not doing my best, I just make art and it doesn't take long before I am feeling better. I am thinking about someday selling my art and having art classes for children. I want to share the joy of art with my community. Thank you for listening and for taking the time to be here to support me and all those affected by dystonia.
I'm not on. Right? Does anyone have questions for Erin? Councilor Brooks.
Let's make a comment. First of all, it's beautiful art. I can see that you really enjoy color and sharing that vibrancy and you can feel the vibrancy from just your personality. And I just want to thank you for bringing this topic to our city council and helping us understand and know better about what dystonia is, how it affects people, and where we're at right now with finding treatment and a cure. Thank you.
Then Councilor Brooks has a copy of the proclamation for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, that brings us to item number two is Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation. We're doing this tag team style. We'll have Councilor Gonzalez do the English version and we'll have Councilor Reyes do the Spanish version. Councilor Gonzalez, you're up first.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Today's proclamation, whereas each year the United States observes National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the culture heritage and countless contributions of those whose ancestors were indigenous to North America as well as those came from Spain, Mexico, Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas what began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Johnson was expanded by President Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting September 15th and ending October 15th. And whereas this year's theme Unidos Exclusivity for Stronger Nation encourages us to ensure that all voices are represented and welcomed to help build stronger communities and stronger nations. And whereas we recognize and honor the many ways that Hispanics have enriched the fabric of our society while also rededicating ourselves to address the lack of equal access to opportunity that many still face. And whereas Hispanics continue their rich tradition of significant and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, and economic and political vitality of the city of Tuolton. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon at September 15 through October 15, 2024 is Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Tuolton and encourage all residents to celebrate our unique and vibrant history and recommit ourselves to share a future of healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities for all. Introduced, adopted this ninth day of September 2024.
As a proud Honduran American, I was born in Honduras, raised in the challenging and wonderful streets of Pico Union District, Los Angeles, California, and I'm proud now to live here in Tuolton. I will read this in my first language, Spanish, starting now. Por lo cual, cada año, los Estados Unidos observa el mes nacional de la herencia hispana, celebrando la cultura, el patrimonio, y las innumerables contribuciones de aquellos cuyos antepasados eran indígenas de Norteamérica, al igual que los que vinieron de España, México, el Caribe, Centro y Sudamérica. Y por lo cual, lo que comenzó en 1968 con la semana de la herencia hispana bajo el presidente Johnson fue expandido por el presidente Reagan en 1988 para cubrir un periodo de 30 días, comenzando el 15 de septiembre y culminando el 15 de octubre. Y por lo cual, el tema de este año, Unidos Inclusión para una nación más fuerte, nos impulja a asegurar que todas las voces sean representadas y bienvenidas para construir comunidades fuertes y una nación más fuerte. Y por lo cual, reconocemos y honramos las diferentes maneras que los hispanos han enriquecido la tela de nuestra sociedad, más, sin embargo, volver a dedicarnos a abordar la falta de igualdad de acceso a las oportunidades que muchos aún enfrentan. Por lo cual, los hispanos continúan su rica tradición de importantes y diversas contribuciones a la vitalidad cultural, educación económica y política de la ciudad de Tuolton. Ahora, por lo tanto, que sea proclamado por el Consejo de la Ciudad de Tuolton, Oregon, el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre 2024 es el mes de la herencia hispana en la ciudad de Tuolton. Y animamos a todos los residentes a celebrar nuestra historia única y vibrante. Y nos comprometemos a un futuro junto de salud, paz, y comunidades seguras y sostenibles para todos. Presentado y adoptado este 9 de septiembre 2024.
Thank you. That brings us to announcement number three, the September 11th Remembrance Day Proclamation. This one's kind of special to me. I don't do a lot of proclamations. This one I do do. I've known people who made it out of the towers. I know people who did not make it out of the towers. They're all very close to me. And this proclamation, every year I send a text to my best friend when I was a young kid. I've mentioned it before, his brother was a poor authority policeman, was off that day and came into the towers and was killed. And so every September 11th, we have next change of texts and calls. I'm going to send him a picture of this because his family would really enjoy it. Whereas nearly 3,000 citizens of the United States of America were killed on September 11th, 2001, in New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington DC as a result of an unprovoked and cowardly terrorist attack. And whereas we pay tribute to the men and women who perished and reflect on the bravery and courage of our civilian and military first responders and emergency personnel for their quick and selfless actions. And whereas it was also important to remember that countless families were forever changed by the loss of a loved one because of these horrendous attacks. And whereas this September marks the 23rd anniversary of that fateful day, which renewed patriotism throughout the nation and spurred American citizens to civic action. And whereas throughout the state of Oregon, individuals, organizations, and communities will gather this on this 23rd anniversary and honor our nation and the memory of those who lost their lives on September 11th, 2001. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton, Oregon, that Tuolton recognizes September 11th, 2024 as September 11th Remembrance Day in the city of Tuolton. All residents are invited to remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause taken from them. Introduced and adopted this ninth day of September 2024. Remember the calls and the videos and it's unbelievable. Then finding out two brothers that I knew were killed at the same time and the family was devastated. Just unbelievable. Please keep them in your hearts and minds. I know we hear that way too much, but on this 9/11, please remember them. Item number four, National Preparedness Month Proclamation. Lindsay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So every September for about the past 20 years, September is Emergency Preparedness Month across the country. And as we know, emergencies can happen anytime. They come at any scale, any longevity. And it really is the responsibility of, it's an individual and collective responsibility to prepare for those emergencies, big and small. We know that they can be global. We've seen COVID-19. They can be local, like our ice and windstorm that we have here. And so it's a gentle reminder to all of us to be prepared in even just a little bit of a way, right? So it can be making sure you have some emergency water. It can be making sure you have all of your contacts in one place in case we lose power, all the way up to having a generator and solar powers and all that kind of thing. So this Emergency Month Proclamation, again, is a gentle reminder to us all that it is both an individual and collective responsibility for us to think about emergencies, prepare for them. The better prepared we are, the more resilient we can be after an emergency. A great example that you'll hear a little bit more about later on tonight is the Emergency Preparedness Fair put together by our local CERT team, which was a great success last weekend. So thank you for, again, proclaiming that September be Emergency Preparedness Month in the city of Tuolton.
All right. And then what's interesting this afternoon, I keep saying this afternoon, but it was this afternoon, it's a blur. The Agent Task Force, we were talking about Matthew Neighborhood and emergency preparedness and most of the seniors had not heard about it. So Tammy was there. So Tammy and I did the, and Ed gave the, you know, the quick rundown of Matthew Neighborhood. So if we can talk about that later tonight. Because folks didn't know about it. They were interested especially for looking out for seniors, knowing who's in your neighborhood, who's a senior and who might need medication, who might need a generator because their refrigerator and their insulins, you know, needs to be kept cold. But we'll save that for the CERT part, but it was just, it's top of mind today because folks were talking about it. It was a very interesting Agent Task Force meeting today. Council President Pratt.
And I just want to say we're really grateful that we have such an active CERT team that keeps reminding us to be prepared. Whereas National Preparedness Month is a nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security each September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools. And whereas disasters often strike quickly with little or no warning and residents might be forced to evacuate neighborhoods, schools, and work sites, or be confined to homes. And whereas the challenges posed by climate change, such as more intense storms, heat waves, drought, wildfires, and extreme flooding could significantly alter the types and magnitudes of hazards faced by communities. And whereas preparedness is the responsibility of every resident in the city of Tuolton, Oregon, and all residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas National Preparedness Month creates a significant opportunity for every resident of the city of Tuolton to reflect and act on shared responsibility and to be prepared. And whereas the city supports and encourages citizen participation in the Tuolton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, so our community can be prepared, trained, and respond to emergencies. And whereas we commit as a community to nondiscrimination and equitable citizen participation in planning for and responding to disasters. And whereas individuals, neighborhoods, businesses, and communities can all take steps to increase their resilience and look out for one another when major emergencies or disasters strike. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Tuolton that September 2024 is National Preparedness Month and encourages all residents and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plan and work together in creating a more prepared community. Introduced and adopt this ninth day of September 2024.
Thank you. Kathy, you want the certificate now when you do your presentation?
We do when we do presentations.
Okay. All right. That brings us item number five, barriers and solutions to housing. Mr. Kover. Welcome Steve. We talked about this too at the senior housing thing today.
Great.
Agent Task Force is quite busy today.
Yeah, quite busy. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present this announcement. So on Monday, September 30th at 6:00 PM, city staff is hosting a in-depth conversation about housing entitled Barriers and Solutions to Housing. It'll be held here at the Tuolton City Services Center, 10699 Southwest Roman Road. Just a little bit of information about the conversation, in 2023, more than 30% of Tuolton residents were severely rent burdened, meaning they spent more than 50% of their income on rent. And as a result, we are hosting this conversation. We've invited a variety of agency representatives with housing expertise, including Washington County and one of our own affordable housing providers, Community Partners for Affordable Housing, to participate in a panel discussion along with the council to discuss the causes and consequences of severe rent burdens in the city, as well as the barriers to reducing those burdens and possible solutions. Members of the public are encouraged to attend and will also be given an opportunity to share their perspectives. Light refreshments will be provided, so we encourage people to sign up in advance. If folks have questions or want to sign up, they can reach out to us at planning@tuolton.gov or 503-691-3026.
So one of the questions they had is this, will this be also on Zoom or do you have to be in person?
It's encouraged for people to be in person, but we will have a Zoom option because it's a public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Item number six, Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant Award Announcement. Rachel, you're back up. This is much better news. Better subject.
We've been getting happy calls about this.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not Nick Westendorf, but I'm Rachel Sykes in my work with Nick Westendorf. So Nick's on Zoom in case you guys have any questions that I'm not aware of. But if you have not already heard, we have some exciting news. The city's application for funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation's Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Grant Program was selected with the official notice sent out to us on August 27th. So the project has been named Tuolton and Neighbors Charge Up. So Tank Up for short. Tuolton took the lead on submitting this as a regional grant application with 16 partner cities, PGE, and Fourth Mobility, which is a locally-based nonprofit whose mission is to electrify transportation. The scope of our grant application includes 500 Level 2 chargers across all the partner cities at low and moderate income multi-family locations and public facilities like parks, libraries, quarry parking lots, places like that. The key there is that they are publicly accessible. This also includes education and outreach events to help folks get familiar with EVs, to aid in adoption of EVs, because I think some people have some EV fear. Is am I going to run out of charge? What does this mean? How do I do this? How do they work? Is it going to drive me, you know? So a way to get the information out about EVs with things like rodeos and stuff like that. This could also mean public engagement events, some educational materials that cities and our partner cities can promote, and maybe an EV car sharing program, which would be kind of cool and innovative. So the total project cost is $18.8 million. So this is a pretty big grant. So that's why we're very excited. $15 million of that will come from the CFI program, so from the feds. $3.6 million will be offered up as the city's match from an EV charging partner. And that will be selected through a competitive process that we get into further on in our grant administration process. So we'll pick a charging. That'll be nice because then there'll be consistency amongst a charging company for the 500 chargers. One of the things we hear from people is I have to have 17 apps for eight different charging companies. So this will hopefully create some continuity. And $200,000 has been offered up from PGE to aid in some of the education events and processes that we'll be putting forward. So it's a pretty significant grant. You may be wondering, what are the next steps? Would you get an $18 million grant? The first thing we have to do is execute the grant agreement with the Federal Highway Administration. And if you've ever worked with the feds, they don't necessarily move that quickly. It could be up to six months before we get a grant agreement signed. So it's kind of just like pause, take a deep breath. We're going to be attending some informational webinars this month. So we'll have, you know, a better idea of what the timeline's going to look like and what everything is going to entail to get the grant agreement signed. In the meantime, before the grant is signed, we're going to gear up internally. So we're working on a project manager recruitment. One of the nice things about this grant is it also comes with funding for a limited duration project management position that can help implement and coordinate with the 16 partner agencies. We've already been getting emails and contacted, when are we going to get our chargers? Well, so this will kind of help herd the cats. That is the coordination with the partner agencies. So that will be good. And so we want to make sure that once we get the grant funding and signed, that we're ready to hit the ground running. We have a particular number of years to get the chargers installed. So we want to make sure we're ready to do that. So along with this, it's similar in our relation. We're working on our CAP Climate Action Work Plan that we think that this grant will do a lot of work to advance many of the actions in the Climate Action Plan. So we want to make sure that we're including this CFI work as part of our work plan for climate action. This advances a number, focus area, excuse me, this advances a number of actions in focus area six of the Climate Action Plan, which is the transportation, the modes and fuel switching. And so you'll see a number of those items show up in the CAP work plan. That's going to be coming forward, led by Cheryl Lynn at our October 14th meeting. So that's coming right up. And the draft plan's going to include actions that we can take on over the next couple of years, as well as actions supported by the additional capacity that will be created by that project management position that I mentioned. So we will keep you updated as this progresses. The next milestone likely to come to council will be at the grant agreement execution, but we're happy to keep you abreast of everything that happens as we move forward with this. So yay. Any questions?
Okay, I'm not clear. Is this $18 million for the 16 partner cities or $18 million for Tuolton?
So one of the things that we need to determine, in the grant application, we wrote that Tuolton will likely receive about 100 chargers from this. That number isn't necessarily set in stone. So the $18.8 million is to be distributed amongst all of the 16 partner cities. One of the questions that we've been receiving from our partner cities is how many chargers are we going to get? One of the things we still need to work on is figure out exactly how much installing a charger is going to cost. It's pretty situational. I mean, if you have to run something power underground, it's very expensive. And so TBD, but we want to make sure that Tuolton is, receives a good lion's share of chargers because we took the lead in the application. We put in the legwork. We're going to house. So while we will be sharing the love with our partner cities, we want to make sure that Tuolton does get a good number of chargers.
But just to put a finer point on that, there will not be money changing hands between the partner cities. Like they, we're not entering into like an agreement that they will get money. We will be the fiscal agent for all of that. And then the chargers will be going to the partner cities.
Councilor Brooks.
First of all, congratulations and thank you for, you know, there was, there were 16 partner cities that could have done this and you guys did this. And I just appreciate your work and dedication towards moving our Climate Action Plan forward in a big way. And this to be the first action item on it. And while we're even still kind of putting it together is pretty exciting. I also think people should know that 15 million is the most that you can win in this grant. So we're getting the same amount of money as Minneapolis. Or if you look on the list of grant recipients, the cities, it's pretty impressive that Tuolton's there. So I just think that's amazing. And I do have, I do think that it's kind of great too, that we get to pause with the federal dispersment as we lift the, finalize and put together that Climate Action Plan. And I'm just curious, like where we're at with, you know, the money that we budgeted for the CAP and hiring the people and all that stuff.
So I can tell you that the year one, I mean, proposed action is obviously when you're standing up a new program, you have to think about, well, what capacity do we need to do this? What capacity do we need to do this from a staffing perspective? What capacity do we need to fund these actions and these items? Because it takes money and funds. And so that will be included as one of the first actions that we undertake once this work plan is adopted. I think we have a little bit of a rough idea of what we'd like to do. And that's something that will probably move forward, ideally rather quickly when the work plan is brought to council for approval. So. when the work plan is brought to council for approval. So for the Climate Action Plan. Okay.
Councilor Gonzalez, you have your mic on. Okay. Any other questions for Rachel? I'm just very excited. There's a lot of work by Nick and yourself.
Yeah.
The whole city staff.
I was going to say I'd be remiss if I did not mention all the work put into this by Nick. I'm not Nick. I didn't necessarily take the lead on the grant application, so I don't want to steal his thunder. He's in Zoom land. Bates, you can put him on. He can wave at everybody. But yeah, we definitely took a leap. It's a little bit scary to take on a project that's, you know, of this magnitude, but the opportunistic time was there. And so I'm really glad that we were able to take that, and then we ultimately were rewarded. So, oh, there he is. Hey!
Also, want to thank our federal representatives. They were very helpful in this, especially Senator Merkley's office, who helped us form our response with his questions that we had to get, you know, answered. And then Representative Salinas, Ron Wyden, they were all on board for this. Susan Bonamici, very supportive. But I do particularly want to mention Senator Merkley, because he had some great questions that we had to answer, especially about, you know, making it easy. And he was very helpful. So I just want to give him a lot of kudos and thanks for helping us get this over the finish line.
Thank you, Mayor, for touting it on your trip to DC. We appreciate that.
All right. Councilbrooks.
I'm just curious if we're anticipating any grants coming to support this project from the state as well?
In addition to CFI, I don't think so. I don't, that would be probably considered a separate ask. And in terms of EV, I don't know if we'll go after those funds or not. TBD on what may come available. I can tell you that we've applied for now two grants from Oregon Department of Energy as part of our INPIP project. So we're kind of working the state on funding for some of that. But for EV specifically, I don't know of any other grants we would particularly go after, but I think there may be some available. Thank you.
I also want to congratulate the city of Albany, was the other city in the state that won for a million plus, and ODOT had a couple hundred million dollar haul for EV charging of trucks to look at. So.
For their corridor program.
Two cities in the state are going to be busy with this EV charging grant.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the city council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. Entertain the folks who are in the room first, and then we'll get to the folks in Zoom. I've got one person signed up for public comment, but you don't have to be. But since he signed up first, he gets to go first. I think this is George Sampson. There you are. Welcome, sir.
How you doing tonight?
Good.
I think we were here earlier, listening to the comments. I'm talking about the street trees.
You can, you go ahead, Seth. Be comfortable.
Anyway, we're talking about the street trees. They put them in the front yards of people's houses, and they put them in the areas that they shouldn't actually be put in. I can only talk about my house, but I went around and looked, and it's amazing. I thought I was the only person that had this problem, but I'm not. My house is, the street trees are, let's see, the, where they go in the street is only 40 inches wide. City calls for 48. And when you plant a tree, they want a 30-foot perimeter around it for the root base to not get into another tree, which they are. They want the planting strip at least between four and six foot. It's not that. It's, I got water, storm, sewer. Now I have cable and everything there. That was my first tree. They took that out, ran down the stump, left it, and then they planted another tree just down from it. I told them I didn't want another tree. I told them that wasn't the place for it. The city put it in there anyway. It's happened to other people in the area. I heard during your work session that you want to find people to do it, to not have trees. I don't think finding people and telling them they have to have a tree in their own front yard and then telling them that they're responsible for sidewalks. See, I got a sidewalk driveway, front of my house. I've got to take all those roots out. After the tree is cut down, I'm supposed to be responsible for cutting a tree down that I didn't want to begin with. And then you say you're going to find us, too. I think it would be smarter, and you want to try and get away from this, to maybe just not plant the trees to begin with. Sorry, I know you like Tree City USA, and I love trees. I got stuff in my backyard. I grew up around trees. I get it. I'd hate to see you have to go to the annual mayor's convention and not be able to brag about being Tree City USA. But I, and I look at the trees that they're, they gave us to choose from, and really, none of them are for the parking strips. So I think we're kind of shooting ourselves in the.
You can finish up.
I think you're kind of shooting yourself in the foot. And like they said, get away from it altogether. Don't force the people. And there are people in town that can't afford, I'm going to probably be paying probably about $7,000, $8,000 easy to take care of all of this. And I asked them not to to begin with. Please. And you got the letter from me.
Yep, I did.
And my wife said you're crazy to invite me. So that's it.
Thanks for coming tonight. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to supply some public comment? Okay, seeing none. Anybody in Zoom land, Nicole?
No.
All right. That'll bring us to consent. Consent agenda items are considered routine. They'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the work session irregular meeting minutes of August 26, 2024. Item number two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Yindi Thai cuisine. Item number three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Saki One Corporation. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5806-24, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County outlining the county and city obligations as they pertain to the county's planned Phase 2 ride connection shuttle stop improvements. And item number five, consideration of resolution number 5807-24, authorizing the city manager to execute a collective bargaining agreement with the American Federal State County Municipal Employees Local 422. Would any council like an item pulled from consent and heard later tonight?
I move that we adopt the consent agendas red.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as red. Any discussions on those motions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. That brings us to special reports. Item number one, Tewolleton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, 2023-2024 Annual Report. Welcome, Kathy.
Yes. I brought a friend.
I think I was supposed to introduce you.
Oh, you're going to introduce us.
I think everyone knows Kathy.
I think everyone knows formidable Kathy Holland, don't we?
I didn't know that was part of it.
That's right. I was, I ill-prepared her.
I love the introductions. Good luck.
Yes. So hi again. As we all know and love Kathy Holland, and this is Heather Schlotter. She is one of the other masterminds, especially between this, about this here, CERT preparedness fair, emergency preparedness fair. But CERT, as a reminder, was formed in Tewolleton in 2016, and they offer free trainings twice a year to our residents and those who work in the city for free. It's all volunteer-based. And so we do the math. We're about our 15th or 16th incoming training class. We've been, our CERT team has been going all through COVID. A lot of CERT teams in the area did not. So we have a very robust, very committed team. The city, we have an agreement with CERT, and so they are, really are the cornerstone of our public-facing emergency preparedness for the city of Tewolleton. We financially support CERT as well as do some administrative support, but they really are our community-facing wing of emergency preparedness. So we are very proud to work with them all throughout the year and really couldn't do emergency preparedness the way we do without them. So Kathy and Heather are here to talk about their year and then give a nice recap of the CERT fair that happened last weekend, the second annual. So take it away. I'll back up now.
Thank you, Lindsay.
We'll just say, you're welcome.
And let me compliment Lindsay. She is not only very competent, she's a lot of fun to work with. So if you get an opportunity to spend time with her, it's worth it. Heather is our creative genius, and I brought her along tonight to introduce, I hope, an entertaining picture of our fair that just happened on Saturday. Now, I understand these are sticky. So Bates, help? Okay. All right. So here's our summary, which you all have had. We just hosted our second fair, and based on the survey of our members, we moved from the community park and we formed a partnership with the library. And I've come away thinking the library are all superheroes. Everyone there is a superhero. They are so committed to community outreach. It was, Heather was in every meeting. Would you agree, Heather?
Absolutely.
Yeah, they're just fantastic. We, tomorrow night is our first class of our basic. And actually, when we go through and count the number of classes, it's 19 that we've had since we formed, because we did two corporate classes in addition to the citizen classes. As of mid-August, when I prepared this, we had 178 members. 106 are active. Active means they've done four things during the year. If they're on our roster, it means they want to stay on our roster, which is if there's a catastrophic event and we need to call them out, if they're here, if they're physically able, if they're available to help, they will, they will come. We do have 10 to 15 people pull out every year. So our classes basically have kept us about the same level. We have 80 HAM licensed holders and 49 GMRS. Yes, Mr. Mayor, one of our GMRS. And these are areas we want to expand our emergency communication. And then the mobilization requests from the city have been to help with the Blender Dash, Viva Tewolleton, and the Punkin Regatta. Okay, next slide. This is, this is what a creative, non-creative accountant does to talk about a fair. You're going to see creative in a minute. Okay. Thanks to Lindsay and Washington County, we have a grant to create a mobilization trailer. We're going to use funds from a donation of one of our former members who passed away, and this is going to be a radio mobilization unit. We picked white so we could park it and hide it among the white vehicles in this parking lot. It's a single axle so that a small vehicle, a smaller vehicle, you don't have to be a big truck. And the boys that are working on this are going to put in all kinds of racking systems and storage systems and antennas, and it's going to be wonderful. But right now, it's a dream concept, and we'll work with Lindsay to build it out. So thank you for getting that grant. And then we'll be putting in about $3,000 to $4,000 of the donated money. Okay. You all know that we are prepared for disasters, and we're hoping, and I promised the mayor, that we would not have a catastrophic event for three years after we formed. At least three years. Well, it's been longer than three years. So far, we haven't had a catastrophic event. But we are preparing people for weather events and other kinds of emergencies. Click. It's the consequences that we prepare people for. Click. Next one. Okay. We, everyone agrees that climate change has made everything more difficult, and it has. Clackamas County had a Level 2 warning on the outskirts of Tewolleton a couple of years ago from fire. We actually have, we're kind of a low-risk community for a lot of weather issues other than flooding. And then I'd say we're in the higher risk category. Okay. And then, of course, fire, smoke, all that. Click. Okay. So we're continuing to prepare citywide, and we're working within the CIO structures. Our team kits are scattered all over the city by CIO. And this, I'm going real fast, because all of you have heard this before, because this is similar to last year. We are 501(c)(3). Tewolleton Neighborhood Ready is our neighborhood plan, which we will talk to the Aging Task Force. I wrote that down. And at the time that I prepared this presentation, it wasn't certain, but starting September 18th, we're going to be at Tewolleton High School, and we're starting a teen CERT club. The way that teen CERT training happens in Oregon is they form a club first, and then our hope is that the high school will actually develop a course. Now, since these are young, what generation are they in high school? Help me out. Are they ZX, A, alphas? What are they?
Z.
The Zs. They're not calling it teen CERT. They're calling it crisis management. And the first topic is, is it a crisis if my phone doesn't work? So that's how the topics are going to go. And I think it's going to be fun, because it turns out they don't know how to cook or change a tire either. So we're real hopeful. We're hopeful that we get some kids signed up on this. The thing that was holding us up was we needed an advisor. So we now have an advisor, and we'll see where it goes. Okay, next. Honest, I'm pushing. Okay, this is just a summary of the training, and I'm going fast, because I want you to see the wonderful work Heather did. But that's what our training covers. And then, of course, here are the projects, same as last year, with the exception of teen CERT, and of course, the trailer. And I always come with tips that I hope that you will adopt in your own life, and that is establish a family plan, a contact list. You are the leaders in the city. If you will do these three things, you will be ahead of the game, and you can help encourage others. I encourage you to store water, a gallon per person per day, and we recommend three weeks of water. We want you to keep your gas tank half full. I've admitted previously that I was someone who discovered that I could go another 10 miles after the E, that gauges, well, no longer. If a half a tank of gas is very important, and if you have an electric vehicle, keeping it charged up. And then know your utilities. Know where they are. Get to know your hot water heater. Know how to turn off your gas and electric. Make sure everyone in your home does. Now, that's the bullet point presentation. And do you want to do a little intro?
Sure.
Creative genius.
Thank you.
By the way, we had this on Saturday, and.
We're still recovering.
We're still recovering. This woman produced this in one day. So go for it.
I heard some of you got to come out to the emergency fair. This is the second time we've had it. We had it in the park last year, which was, which was also fabulous, but it was really spread out, because it was such a big location. So we were really excited to condense it down and have it at the library with some air conditioning, which was great, especially since we had the heat right before.
And no yellow jackets.
And no yellow jackets, which was great. And we had a fabulous turnout. It was just, it wasn't super crowded, but it was consistently busy for the whole four hours.
It was just, it wasn't super crowded, but it was consistently busy for the whole four hours. And we had a lot of returning, almost all returning exhibitors from last year, which shows that we did a good job, and they wanted to come back, and some, some new really great ones. And so I was going through the photos yesterday, and I decided, you know, I was going to drop these into a slideshow, and I sent it to Kathy, and she asked if I would, um, show it for you guys tonight. So it's going to show almost all of our volunteers. I tried to capture a picture of each of them, and all of the exhibitors are here. So you'll get a little sense of it if you didn't get to come in person, and it was really fun. And Lindsay was there with all of her cool stuff, too.
Yes, Lindsay was a champ.
Yeah, and there's music, maybe too loud, just warning you. Turn it down if you need to.
So that's our story. Any questions?
Questions?
You gotta be exhausted, how did you? I told my kids, I'm like, I'm going to go sleep for three days now. Just get yourself your food and to school. No, it was really, really fun, and, um, it was such a great team effort, and, um, the exhibitors were all happy, as you can see, there's big smiles, and it was a really great day, so.
I had, uh, I would say four, I think three or four exhibitors come up that were at another city that starts with T, that had an emergency fair, and they were so complimentary. Uh, we don't charge for being there, and we really try to promote small businesses. And for a small business, or the Girl Scouts, or any of those groups, for them to pay a fee to be at a fair is, is a hardship. So, uh, we really want to encourage the small business outreach.
And we did a big prize drawing where we let the exhibitors, um, give something from, you know, their business and then gave it away at the end of the day. And so people got to go home with gifts and get to learn about a new local business, or the Girl Scouts.
Yeah, we had about thirty prizes, and our grand prize was two tickets to the Trail Blazers. So the Blazers stepped up, and I think we had thirty guests that were very happy because some of the prizes were really nice.
Well, and I had quite a few visitors come up, and they didn't know who I was from any other CERT there, and they were just going on and on about how great it was and how much they learned, and how much they, they would come each time and learn a little bit more, and that, that they felt like it helped them be safer. They felt safer in their life, and that was all I needed to hear, to know that we gotta, we gotta keep doing that.
Just took forty volunteers, about a billion hours to do it. Lot of effort.
My favorite part was when I first got there, my husband and I, these people were so encouraging, and then they routed us right to the portable toilet seats.
Why are they running around with toilet seats all excited?
We were, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it, it's a reflection on our attitude with giving away toilet seats is like a highlight.
Council Brooks?
Thanks, and I love the film too, and, um, it's really, really nice. Uh, congratulations. I love the idea of the teen, um, program at the school, the club. And do you know the leads, uh, the teen leads?
Uh, yes, it's, uh, Rika Sok, how do we say her last name? Sokar? Sokar?
Sokar, I think.
Sokar. You're Rika Sokar.
She's the student.
Yeah.
She's a junior this year, and, uh, we met with her a number of times last year, but her dad, Sam, is one of our CERT.
Wonderful.
Yeah, she's great.
Well, congratulations to her too, and, um, I think that's just so fabulous. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I just want to, I swung by in the late afternoon, right before you started taking stuff down, but I zipped through, but I certainly liked the, the cherry picker from the city, the truck the kids were getting on. TV F and R didn't have to leave. I think that's your critique.
We don't want to talk about that. Let me say, the city is committed.
Yeah, I mean, it was, I saw quite a few people there. Um, the one thing, not to be a Debbie Downer, so going back to the Aging Task Force, a lot of them said they couldn't read your signs.
Oh, because they're too small.
They're too small, and only people who walk by can see them. They said if you're driving by, because a lot of the senior folks wanted to go to that event.
Like the yard signs.
Yeah, the yard signs.
Yeah.
Uh, Ed, uh, Ed Casey had a good point. Uh, what he did in his neighborhood is he put it next to his mailbox.
Yeah.
So everybody could see it. But suggestion from the Aging Task Force was make the print bigger for next year for folks who are going buying cars. Uh, because a lot of them aren't walking by, and they, they wanted to attend. Quite a few went to community park, they thought it was there. So, but just FYI for next year.
We've already started an assessment and survey, so we'll add that to the list.
Can I add one thing with the, the signs? I like that idea. Um, I would be really open to, um, having a sign next time in my yard. There's a lot of people that come by and ask me questions and different things like that, so I'm sure that some of the other counselors would too, and then it would also, you know, be a constant reminder for me to remind people and stuff as well.
Thank you.
Anyway, so that would be, I would love that, if it's cool.
See if you can get away, put one outside the post office.
Hey, it's on the list now.
And just quickly, our Latino Coalition had a meeting, uh, and they were, um, they wanted to attend, but they would love to have signs in their, in Spanish.
Well, our, our brochure was actually both, the cards were both in English and Spanish, but not the signs.
Yeah, and our posters were also bilingual.
Our posters were bilingual, but, um, as you who run for election know, yard signs are like
Yes, gold, yes, there's only so much.
But we, 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 we need to do better, no question.
Yeah, I mean, they were beautiful signs. They were nice signs.
Yeah, but they're too small.
Yeah, but then if you try to put too much more writing on there, you lose the space.
But the, the nice thing about it is now we've done two years, so we have some history with the community, so we don't need to provide as much information on the sign. But the B stays, I'm sorry.
The B, we gotta keep the B.
Yeah, I, there's too much pressure to lose the B. Just be ready. Do you, did you name it?
He doesn't have a name yet.
It's a flashlight.
Maybe we could vote.
Council Pratt?
You're going to do your Thank you very much, appreciate it. Is this going to be published in the whole fleet? Yeah, she did all the angles, bless her. Well, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time you put into this and everything else.
Thanks for the support, the money, thank you.
Uh, right, that brings us to items removed from consent. We had none. Uh, Council Communications. Council Hillier?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one reminder that school started up, so please remember the little flashing lights, the twenty-mile-an-hour zone, and just be safe watching our kids who walk and bike to school especially.
Council Brooks?
I just want to repeat again that there's, you know, a lot of people have COVID right now. There's a new vaccine, um, it's available, so you can go to your local pharmacy and get it. I also want to say again, um, Happy Hispanic Month, and for two, for both of our fellow counselors, and, um, there was one other thing. Go ahead.
The Historical Society fundraisers this Friday, and this morning, when I checked, there's still tickets, and it's really fun, and this year, they're going to have like the History of Magic. It's going to be pretty, so if you're interested, go to Tuolton.
It's cheaper to buy it ahead than at the door.
That's right.
And it's only, they're only selling forty-eight tickets this year, so it's going to be a very, you know, elite crowd.
I remember my thing, so I know some, uh, I'm not running this year, but some of my fellow counselors are running this year, and I just want to remind people, if you haven't registered to vote, if for some reason you came to the community, or you just turned, uh, eighteen, or you're going to be turning eighteen by the fifth of November, the last day to register to vote is October fifteenth, and, um, enjoy the debate.
Anyone else? You gotta do your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have motioned second to adjourn in this meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Have a terrific evening. Thank you for attending tonight, either via Zoom or in person.